All right. Good morning, everybody. Are we ready to go? Okay. Welcome. This is the Mason County Commission Regular Business Meeting for August 3rd, 2021. We will begin with our Pledge of Allegiance and Sharon, Commissioner Trask, would you do us the honor, please, to lead this pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under the indivisible, indivisible.
Wonderful. Thank you, Commissioner. Roll call, please.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two, Kevin Schutte.
Here.
Commissioner District Three, Sharon Trask.
I'm here.
Thank you. Item number four is our correspondence and organizational business. Mackenzie, do we have correspondence to come before the body today?
We do. Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board sent in the following: a liquor and marijuana license due to expire, and liquor licenses for Summertide Resort and Westside Pizza. Carl Soper sent in a letter resigning from the Board of Equalization. Linda Knowlton, Scott Kumpel, Kevin and Nadine Brown, Sharon and Byron Frazier, Shannon Hagan, Mike and Tara Williams, M.J. Ledesma, Mark Chuljian, Mark Gregorius, and Diane Gany sent in letters regarding funding the expansion of broadband to provide full Internet access to Hood Canal. The Economic Development Council of Mason County sent in the 2021 Quarter Two Report. Colleen and Gary Stout sent in a letter regarding Phase Two improvements for the Agate Beach Water System. Kevin McRae and Keenan Duke and Tom and May Hoffman sent in letters regarding positive consideration of the Viewcrest Storage Update Project. William Bezzenson sent in a Noxious Weed Control Board application, and David Peppard sent in a Veterans Advisory Board application. The Mason Conservation District sent in the Mason County's Voluntary Stewardship Program 2019 to 2021 Biennial Report, and the State of Washington Department of Ecology sent in the 2020 Wastewater Treatment Plan Outstanding Performance Awards.
Thank you very much. Item number 4.2, Certificates of Appreciation for Mason County COVID-19 Volunteers, announcement by Ross McDowell.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning.
Good morning, Ross.
I would like to take this time to show our appreciation from not only Area Command for the COVID response and recovery, but also for our Board of County Commissioners, Public Health Department, and the Division of Emergency Management for all of our volunteers who assisted us and are continuing to assist us with this COVID response. The COVID pandemic, Area Command response started in March 16th, 2020. From the very beginning, we knew this pandemic was going to take a toll on our local businesses and community. Mason County Strong became a community motto and one that we would live up to. We had community members volunteering many hours of service to our community response efforts from the very beginning. We had community members volunteering with their experience and knowledge of organizational skills, logistics, medical training to assist with our county's response to this pandemic. In particular, with the support of numerous vaccine clinics, both in Belfair and in Shelton, there were over 97 volunteers working those clinics. From directing traffic, handing out literature, collecting paperwork, giving the vaccines themselves, volunteers were involved. Behind every successful organized event, there are extraordinary volunteers giving their time. It is with our deepest gratitude for their commitment to serve that we thank you on behalf of Mason County Board of County Commissioners, the Public Health Department, Division of Emergency Management, Area Command, and the county itself. This response couldn't have been a success without your involvement. Thank you so very much for volunteering. All of the volunteers that we have listed will be getting a certificate in the mail or via their fire department for one of the groups. We didn't have addresses far, but we have it through their fire department. So we would like to thank them very much.
I can't hear you, Randy.
I think the Commissioners might want to say a word on that as well.
I would love to hear that, yes.
Commissioner Trask, would you like to lead?
I would. Thank you. Yeah, I think we set up our response team on February 28th of last year and started meeting daily for many months. Everyone involved in our meetings volunteered their time as well, but I especially want to thank those that came to the pop-up clinics and the everything that was, everything that we had. They were valuable and we could not have had organized events without them. So, thank you.
Mr. Schutte? Oh, it's your turn to be muted. Thank you for legitimizing mine, Commissioner.
Yeah, no, happy to help out, Commissioner. Yeah, I just want to echo the thanks and the gratitude to all of our volunteers. Just an extraordinary year and a half, you know, for our community and, you know, indeed the state, nation, and world. You know, there's no way to say thank you that would ever be sufficient for the effort that folks put in this past year. And, you know, this is one small token of our gratitude and appreciation. We're not out of the woods yet with this pandemic, even on the healthcare side, but also on the economic recovery and, you know, social recovery that is still to come. You know, and so in many ways, this feels a little bit like halftime in terms of the progress that we still need to make. But for people out in the community that want to say thank you and are thinking about how to say thank you, there's a lot of ways to do that. One of the best ways to do that is, you know, continue to keep in touch with all the updates that are coming out of public health. Get vaccinated. Talk to your friends and family about what they can do to help in terms of getting vaccinated. If you have questions, if you have concerns, talk to your healthcare provider. That's the best way to help the economy come back online. That's the best way to help keep people in our community safe and healthy and really the best way to help us continue to turn the corner on this. We wouldn't be where we are today without an incredible effort from our public health and DEM staff, but also these 97 volunteers who chipped in and did everything they could to help out. So an amazing amount of effort and work and just so appreciative for everything that they did.
Thank you, Commissioner. I also would like to extend my thank yous from the bottom of my heart to all these people that stayed out there. People would have no idea unless they were there to watch them standing out in the rain, freezing cold, standing out in the sun, dying of heat as you run around trying to get them water, dealing with individuals with many, many, many different issues that caused a lot of attention that was needed to be given to them. And I do not want to forget our staff that are not on that list for recognition. One of them right here is Ross McDowell, who I can assure you was helping them in and out of their wheelchairs, bringing them, you know, something to sit on, keep warm. He was involved with every single aspect of it, and although he was there representing us under pay, I can assure you he went way farther than anything we would expect from an employee. And we need to give him a pat on the back as well as so many of the others that were out there. I am so thankful and our community is thankful. And there's a few others I would, Ingrid Lopez, we never got her an award. She helped us to bring in the Guatemalan community and there was just so many others that we didn't get awards to, but they're still just as important. So God bless each and every one of you. Thank you for all the work that you did. And as I said before, including our staff. Thank you. Thank you, Ross. Okay, so Mackenzie, is there any other correspondence or organizational business to come before the body?
No, there is not.
Thank you. So next up, we're going to move into item number five, which is our open forum for citizens' input. This is going to be your opportunity to speak to the Commission on any item that is not on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, we're asking you to hold off. You'll be given an opportunity to speak at that time if you'd like. So with that being said, if you'd like to talk to the Commission on an item not on the agenda, please remember you have a three-minute maximum. And we also hope that you would understand that others may want to speak. So if you could keep it brief, it'd be appreciated because there's only 15-minute maximum for everybody. So with that being said, I'm going to ask you to please raise your hand on the participants if you are interested in speaking to the Commission on an item not on the agenda. In the participant block, please raise your hand. I see none, so I'm going to ask you if you would like to speak and didn't know how to operate that. You could please unmute yourself now. Say your name and I will give you an opportunity to speak after I call on you. Is there anybody who would like to speak regarding anything not on the agenda? I see none, so we are going to move forward to item number six, which is the adoption of today's agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'll move adoption of today's agenda with one point of clarification on item 8.17. We have the Belfair Substation line item attributed to PUD 1. That's a PUD 3 project request. And so just want to note that for the record as I move approval of the agenda.
8. You said which one?
8.17, the ARPA authorization.
Oh, down below there. Okay, I'm with you.
Yeah.
With exception of PUD 3.
I'm sure PUD 1 would love to have 1.5 million for a substation, though, so I want to.
Yep, I'm sure you're right. All right, with that being said, do I have a second?
I'll second.
It has been moved in second for the adoption of the agenda as presented with a revision on item number 8.17 to replace in one of the lines, PUD 1, and replace it with PUD 3. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next up is our approval of our minutes.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve the July 19th, 2021 briefing minutes.
Second.
It has been moved in second for the approval of the July 19th, 2021 briefing minutes as presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. All right, next up is item number eight. Item number eight is our approval of our action agenda. Any item that is on the action agenda, all of them will be read into the record at one time. You'll be given an opportunity at that point to ask a question if it would help you to decide whether or not to take it off for a separate vote. But if you would like to testify and take it off for a separate vote, then please do that instead of just asking questions and trying to testify during the question time. I am going to read, Commissioner Trask, will you read 1 through 6? I'll read 7 through 13, and Commissioner Schutte, if you wouldn't mind reading 14 through 19.
Item 8.1, Approval of Warrants and Treasure Electronic Remittances Claims Clearing Fund Warrant Warrant Number 8081895 through 8082101, amount $645,488.30. Direct Deposit Fund Warrants Number 79364 through 79766, amount $823,446.46. Salary Clearing Fund Warrants Number 7006060 through 7006082, in the amount of $540,779.09. Item 8.2, Approval to Add Reed Yamasoto to the Mason County Recreation Area Park Host Contract Number 20-118 with Shelley Warren for a term from July 19th, 2021 to December 31st, 2022. Item 8.3, Approval to Set a Public Hearing for Tuesday, August 31st, 2021, at 9:15 a.m. to consider a request to rezone three parcels. Number 32007-14-890024 and 32007-14-90021 and 32007-14-90034 in the Shelton Urban Growth Area from Neighborhood Residential to Commercial Industrial. Item 8.4, Approval to Set a Public Hearing for Tuesday, August 31st, at 9:15 to consider a correction of the official development area zoning map. Panel 8 of 10 for parcel number 32026-10-90021, 1 acre, from Rural Natural Resource to Rural Residential 5. Item 8.5, Approval for the Chair to Sign the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative, JDAI, Implementation County Program Agreement with Department of Children, Youth, and Families Agreement Number 2163-23920 and DCYF Agreement Number 2183-22425 for state fiscal year 2022 and 2023 for a maximum agreement amount of $49,000. Item 8.6, Approval of the Health Resources and Service Administration Grant Subcontract with Olympic Health and Recovery Services for the Health Rural Communities Opiate Response Program.
I think, item number 8.7, Approval for the Chair to Sign the Contract for Mason County Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Plan Update, 2021 through 2026, furnished by the team of Robert W. Droll, landscape architect, to perform the scope of services in the amount of $48,500. Item number 8.8, Approval to Sign the Amendment to the Memorandum of Understanding between the Squawson Island Tribe and the Mason County Sheriff's Office. Item number 8.9, Approval of the Ordinance Amending, Ordinance Number 69-17, Mason County Code Chapter 2.132.010, Sheriff's Fees. Item number 8.10, Approval of the Amendment 22 to the Mason County Public Health, 2018 through 2021 Consolidated Contract, CLH 18253, to add an additional $28,250 of funding. Item number 8.11, Approval to amend Resolution 2020-86, Mason County Personnel Policy to add, remove, and update the language in chapters 1.4, 3.5, 5.1, 5.2, 7, 7.1, 7.2, 7, 7.2.20, 7.3, 7.6, and 7.11. Add chapters 5.3 longevity, 5.12 personnel action policy, 7.10 Washington State Long-Term Care Trust Account, and 17 telework policy, and rescind Resolution 2020-29, Mason County Telework Program Policy and Procedure and Mason County Code Chapter 2.153. Item number 8.12, Approval to authorize the county engineer to procure a new John Deere 85G excavator and Dynapack CA 1300 Soil Compactor off of the National Joint Powers Alliance, NJPA, Sourcewell Joint Cooperative Purchasing Contract with Pape machinery and trade-in of approved surplus. Item number 8.13, Approval to authorize the county engineer to execute the agreement with Washington State Partner Transportation, Washdot, to provide fabrication inspection and testing upon request from Mason County Public Works.
Item 8.14, Approval for the Chair to execute the Adopt a Road Agreement between Mason County and the Harston Island Community Club to pick up roadside litter from North Island Drive, milepost 0.000 to 4.729, and South Island Drive, milepost 0.000 to 3.304. Item 8.15, Approval for the Chair to execute the Adopt a Road Agreement between Mason County and the Public Utility District Employee Association to pick up roadside litter from Island Lake Drive, milepost 0.000 to 2.317, and Island Lake Road, milepost 0.000 to 0.540. Item 8.16, Approval to set a public hearing for August 31st, 2021, at 9:15 a.m. to consider approving the franchise agreement between Mason County and Clifton Pebble Beach Water District to construct, operate, and maintain their water system along the North Shore Road. Item 8.17, Approval to authorize the interim county administrator to enter into agreements for the following: Mason County Sheriff's Office Body Cameras for $700,000. PUD 1 Agate Beach Water System Main Line, $559,000. PUD 1 Viewcrest Storage Update for $158,284. Belfair Water for $450,000. PUD 3 Belfair Substation for $1,500,000. PUD 1 Customer Rearages Due to COVID-19 for $125,000. Economic Development Council Small Business Grants for $500,000. Hood Canal Communication Colony Surf Fiber Build Out for $313,556 upon receipt of justification from Commerce. Hood Canal Communications Eldon Fiber Build Out for $501,932 upon receipt of justification from Commerce. Hood Canal Communication Customer Rearages for $110,000 upon receipt of justification from Commerce. And Mason County Treasurer Property Tax Rearges for $200,000 using funds from the American Rescue Plan Act for a total of $5,117,772. Item 8.18, Approval to authorize the interim county administrator to issue a request for proposal to the professional services of a Washington State lobbyist. Item 8.19, Approval of the Resolution adopting the 2021-2022 Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Project List as recommended by the Mason County Economic Development Council.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Ladies and gentlemen, now that this has been read into the record, you're going to be given an opportunity now to ask a question that may help you decide whether or not to have something taken off for a separate vote. With that being said, again, this is not your opportunity to testify. If that's what you would like to do, we will ask that you have it removed for a separate vote and you'll be given an opportunity to talk at that time. Knowing this, is there anybody out there that has a question that would help them to decide whether or not to take something off for a separate vote? Please raise your hand on the participants. I see none. If you don't know how to do that, oh, I have one. Shannon, would you please unmute yourself and announce who you are and ask your question, please?
Shannon Hagan. I'm a resident of Colony Surf. I wanted for clarification if you could explain to me what receipt of justification from Commerce means.
Yes, if you don't mind, Commissioner, I'll take that. We are reaching out to Commerce to make sure that it is an absolute allowed use under these fundings to make sure that we don't have to pay it back if it's not. Because it is quite, okay, that answers your question good enough. All right, is there anybody else that has a question regarding anything that's on the agenda that would help them to make a decision whether to take it off for a separate vote? Now, if you don't know how, I'll give you the opportunity now to unmute yourself, say your name, and give me an opportunity to call on you if you have a question that would help you to make this decision. Hearing none. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Do you have any items that you would like taken off for a separate vote, Commissioners? Is there anybody in the audience who would like an item taken off for a separate vote? Please unmute yourself, say your name, and I will give you the opportunity to speak. Hearing none. One more time, anybody would like an item taken off for a separate vote, please unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you. I hear none. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of today's action agenda. Items 8.1 through 8.19 is read.
I'll second.
It has been moved in second for the approval of the action agenda as presented today, items 8.1 through 8.19, as presented. Any comments, Commissioners?
Just one, kind of. I'll combine it. How about that?
Please.
So it will be just one. There are so many important items on this agenda that it would, you know, it would be remiss if I didn't mention a couple. Item 8.8, the MOU with the Squawson Tribe and the Mason County Sheriff's Office. That was a huge step for our Sheriff's Office and for the tribe. Also, the ARPA monies going out to truly help some of the people that need our help. If it's delinquent accounts and then also broadband and getting infrastructure to people that truly need it. I feel it's a, it's an opportunity that was given to us that we can't pass up, so I just wanted to bring attention to those.
Thank you. Commissioner Schutte, do you have something you would like to comment on?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of comments, in particular about item 8.17, item 8.18, item 8.19. On their own, these are all really positive steps forward for the county to be taking. But when put together, they're really important parts of our continued efforts on economic recovery related to the pandemic. Having heard from the community loud and clear on the projects that we're funding today was really helpful. I appreciate all the work that's gone into the planning side of it from the partner organizations that we're approving funding for today. And I think there'll be a really helpful, you know, just an injection into the into the community of infrastructure that we typically don't see funding for and would have otherwise taken us years and years to gain support and legislature to get money for the capital budget. And so this is really kind of a generational opportunity for Mason County. And it ties in with, you know, our effort to procure lobbyists for upcoming legislative sessions because we want to keep this momentum for the county going. We want to be able to have a consistent and clear voice in Olympia when it comes to working with not just our legislative delegation, but legislators from across the state, because I think we have a really compelling story to tell about rural economic development and what we're able to accomplish in our county by bringing together these partnerships to get projects done, which is also why item 8.19, the adoption of the SEDS list, is so important. And Commissioner Netherland, I know you were part of the process on the EDC board and even going back a couple of years and reforming that whole process for how projects were vetted and ultimately included on the SEDS list. And I think being able to look at projects from a shovel readiness standpoint versus a planning standpoint, everybody's allowed to contribute, but as we all know from experience, some projects are further along than others. And so by putting these three items together on today's action agenda, it, I think, sends a clear message to the community that we are interested and very actively engaged in the work of economic development in Mason County and very excited for what future opportunities come from these three items in particular.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I will ditto and echo everything that was just said and just add a little thank you to those that do the work that we're not paying attention to quite often alongside of the roads. Please be safe out there. Harston Island Community Club and the Public Utility District Employees Association for stepping up to do the Adopt a Road programs. It is very much appreciated. It's not a lot of fanfare, but I'll tell you what, we don't notice it when we don't see the trash, but we sure notice it when we do. So when you don't see it, remember there's people involved with that. All right, with that being said, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. We move now into our public hearing. Item number 10.1, Public Hearing to Approve a Rezone of 9.77 Acre Parcel Number 42018-14-00030 from Rural Commercial 1, RC1, to Rural Industrial, R.I. Staff Marissa Watson, and we'll open the hearing now.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm going to share my screens so we can all see where the location of the rezones. Okay. So the applicant for the proposed rezone on today's agenda is Bruce London of Lund Custom Machining Incorporated. His representative, Paul Netson, I believe, is also on the Zoom today as well. Like you said, the rezone is of parcel 42018-14-0030. It is located near the Dayton Hamlet. So Dayton Hamlet is surrounding it. It used to be the location of the old Lager's Bar and Grill, which is no longer there anymore. It has been recently demoed. The request was, we got a full application from the applicant on April 29. And then the PAC heard the rezone request at their June 21st meeting and unanimously and unanimously unanimously approved the recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. Um the request was um also submitted a CIPA um checklist and a determination of non-significance was issued on May tenth. There was a comment period to that closed on May twenty fourth. Um we received general comments from P U D three and um the Department of Ecology. Um and then we didn't receive any, we haven't received any public comments um other than the CIPA comments up until today. At at the at the time of the meeting, there's no comments received. Um we notified the um we notified the owners of the parcels within three hundred feet of the subject parcel. Um it was also notified on site and in the Mason Shelton Journal on June tenth, June seventeenth, and then for this meeting on July fifteenth and July twenty second. Um based on the rezone, eight rezone criteria, uh staff believes that it does meet those criteria. And staff is recommending approval along with the PAC recommending approval of this rezone request to the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you, Marissa. So now that the staff has presented uh this item before us, is there anybody in the audience who has a question regarding the presentation that was just given? If you want to testify, you'll be given an opportunity at another point. This is just to ask our staff questions regarding the testimony or the presentation they gave. If so, please raise your hand. I see none. Uh please unmute yourself, say your name, and I will give you opportunity to ask a question. I see none. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Okay, then uh I'm going to close this part of the testimony and I'm going to move to uh community input here. Uh would the applicant like to speak? There's no need to, but if you would like to, uh Paul, please go ahead and uh uh announce who you are, where you're from.
Yeah, you bet. Uh this is I'm Paul Knutson and I'm actually, I'm an engineer in the Eastern Washington area. Uh but my my family's from the Shelton area. Um and so I'm sorry, did I did I space something? I gave my name. Do I need to be my address or anything?
Yeah, you're fine.
Okay. Um yeah, Marissa summarized it very fairly well about what's going on. It used to be an old uh restaurant that that my cousins had purchased Bruce Lund and 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 their family. It's a family-run business. Um in order to perform this kind of business in this area, the the comprehensive plan and the zoning there, the zoning was was incompatible with the use. And so it necessitated the need for us to submit an application to rezone it from R C to R I just to make it permissible in the zone. Uh the use overall, although you know, there's kind of a moniker that it's industrial versus commercial and it might be more intensive. It's not really the case here. Um what what they're planning on doing is keeping the existing footprint of the building, which is about a four thousand square foot building, and then convert it to a machine shop. Uh have a brand new building put in in its place and employ a a meager staff, I think of seven presently, but up to fourteen um in the surrounding area and for the benefit of Mason County. So with that, that's all I have. I don't know if Bruce would like to say anything as well, but uh thanks for giving us the opportunity.
Thank you, Paul. So Commissioners, did you have any questions for the applicant? Okay, uh so we're in public testimony. Is there somebody else who would like to speak? Please raise your hand. If anybody else would like to speak in public testimony, if you don't know, raise your hand. I'll give you opportunity now to unmute yourself, say your name, and give me an opportunity to call on you, please. Any public testimony, unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you. Hearing none, I will close public testimony and move to Commissioner deliberations and or emotion if they choose.
Mister Chair, uh I move approval of the rezone of parcel number four two zero one eight dash one four dash zero 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 three zero from R C one to Rural Industrial.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded for the Board of County Commissions to approve the rezone of parcel number four two zero one eight dash one four dash zero 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 three zero from R C one to R I. Any comments Commissioners? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. 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 The motion carries and the rezone that happens, that that hearing is closed. We will now open the next public hearing to approve or uh ordinance establishing a twenty five mile per hour speed limit on Snyder Road for mile post zero point zero zero to uh zero point seven two zero in Mason County. Staff Mike Collins.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Um before you is the ordinance to establish the speed limit on Snyder Road. Uh the existing road surface was a mixed surface of gravel and chip seal. Uh this summer, the county forces came in and converted the gravel surface to asphalt. And so it no longer meets the criteria for a permitted road and therefore needs to, is required to have warning signs. And so we had the engineering uh group look at it and establish the recommended speed of twenty five miles an hour.
Thank you. Commissioner, start with you first. Any questions for staff? Regarding their presentation, none. Uh out in the public, raise your hand if you have a question for staff regarding their uh their presentation. I will ask you to unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you if you would like to ask staff a question. Unmute yourself, say your name if you'd like to ask staff a question regarding the presentation. Hearing none, I will close that part of the the hearing and move to public testimony. Is there any public who would like to testify? Please raise your hand. Any public who would like to testify. I'll give you the opportunity now to unmute yourself and say your name. If you'd like to testify, say your name and I will call on you. Hearing none, I will close public testimony and I will move to Commissioner deliberation and or emotion if they choose.
Mister Chair, I move that would be approved, the ordinance to post a twenty five mile per hour speed limit sign on Snyder Road from mile post, mile post, zero point zero 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 to mile post zero point seven two zero.
And I'll second that.
It has been moved and seconded uh to approve and execute ordinance to post a twenty five mile per hour speed limit sign on Snyder Road from mile post zero point zero zero to mile post zero point seven two zero. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mister Chair, just one, one comment. Um this is a, this is a really exciting thing for us to be doing because of what it represents. A couple of years ago, as a commission, we emphasized um doing our gravel road upgrade projects and staff has been fantastic at at getting that rolled out and working with tip cap and identifying roads that that make sense for upgrade. And if you look at our, if you look at our tip, there's a, there's a good list of roads on there for improvement. And so um I'm looking forward to doing some more of these in the future and just uh thanks, Mike, and all of your staff for executing on a on a policy decision the commission made. Appreciate it.
Any further comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, and that hearing is closed. We will now move to our board reports and calendars. I had it uh Commissioner Trask, if you don't mind leading this off, Commissioner Shudy and then myself.
All right. Thank you. I can get to the right day. Uh tomorrow morning, uh I will be at the Sheriff's Office. So if I can get one of you to take over the E O C meeting um at the Sheriff's Office, we will be there doing a training on the the new laws that are coming down that are affecting our officers um all over the state. And so that'll be a very informative meeting. Um we also have the Pear Orchard grand opening for Mason Transit and a Public Works Board Traditional Programs Meeting. Meeting with our new director from Mason Transit on Thursday, also a meeting with Congresswoman Strickland's office. Um also taking or yeah, I'll be listening to a webinar on legal issues regarding um homeless issues and what what we're required to do should be a very educational uh webinar, have a Public Works Board Executive Committee meeting, a D N R beneficiary meeting, and then also the E D C is having an event out at the Ridge Motorsports Motorsports Park on Thursday evening. Should be fun. Public Works Board meeting on Friday. Um we have no briefing on Monday. Uh but we do have a WASAC meeting at noon, having lunch with a good friend and constituent. E O C meeting on Wednesday, um options, task force meeting, uh pre-agenda meeting for Mason Transit, Power the Person meeting for Turning Point. Um emergency, local emergency management meeting. Another Public Works Board Executive Committee meeting and D N R beneficiary meeting. Friday, there's also a public school education program at the Shelton Civic Center. That brings us to the sixteenth where we have our briefing. Uh WASAC meeting and then also um then our commission meeting on the seventeenth.
Hey, uh Mister Chair, just a few items going forward here. Uh so last week I was um I was appointed to the Transmissions Corridor Work Group um representing uh WASAC. Um it's it's a part of the Energy Facilities Site Evaluation Council. Um they're going to be meeting uh over the next year to develop recommendations on how to cite um power facilities in the state and and working through that process. So I have a introductory meeting with um Energy Facility Site Evaluation Council staff um as well as a uh staff meeting with Macecom. Uh I will also be at the Mason Transit Pear Orchard Ribbon Cutting. Um I'll also be attending the local government stakeholder meeting with Congresswoman Strickland. Um have a meeting with ecology regarding Ria fourteen's next steps. Uh and then I'll be out with uh public work staff uh and Chief Spurling meeting with uh the Oak Park H O A regarding some speeding issues in their neighborhood. Uh also have a floodplain permitting meeting with the Mason Conservation District in FEMA, uh crisis care coordination, uh um monthly check in. Um also have a meeting with the uh staff at E D C. Uh then I have my regular Macecom Governance and Legislative Board meetings. Um have the B H A S O Audit Exit Interview. Uh we'll have our inaugural I T Steering Committee meeting. Um then I have my regular check in with the Army Corps of Engineers. Uh and then I'll be touring a supportive housing project in Olympia, um which is uh being um developed by the Low Income Housing Institute. Um pretty excited about that uh as well as my regular B H O staff check in uh ahead of our next meeting on uh the sixteenth and seventeenth.
Thank you. Uh I attended our chamber luncheon. I had the opportunity to attend a very interesting meeting with community wireless partners. They've got uh new ways using different technologies to uh to get Wi-Fi to some of our communities for a lot less money. Um it's not perfect, but it definitely is a good opportunity for some of our communities to do some things in the future. And I'm very happy to announce that the P U D's attended. P U D uh three did. And if there's an opportunity there, uh they can be beneficial to all of us. So we may want to consider some support for that if they decide to jump on. With that, I also attended the farmer's market out here for five XL collecting some donations for our our pets in the area that uh have owners that cannot always afford to take care of many seniors and stuff. Met with Derek Kilmer. We had a regular briefings, uh North Basin Community Voice, Border Health Meeting, Salmon Center have their annual meeting, Area Command Cemetery Board Meeting, three days of risk pool. That was fun. One day, we're gonna have to all talk about that one and uh find out do that. I'm getting old. Uh we had our elected and uh and directors meeting, left board meeting. Uh Mason County Housing Authority Meeting coming up, Mason Transit Authority Pear Orchard. I will be there also. E D C event, I will be there also. Mason Transit Authority Policy Meeting, Peninsula Regional Transportation Organization Meeting. Uh installation at Union City, uh WASAC virtual meetings, Olympic Regional Clean Air Authority meeting, and then later a Finance Committee meeting for the Olympic Regional Clean Air Authority, Economic Development Council, uh our Audit Committee, Bylaws Committee for the E D C and Canvassing Board brings us back and we started all over again. With that being said, is there anything anybody would like to add? I see Sharon move forward. So did you want to say something?
Uh you're funny. Um I did notice that um I think item number nine with everything that was on the agenda may have been missed. And I'm not sure if there's anybody out there that would like to say anything, but.
Is there any other uh business or any department heads or elected officials like to speak? Unmute yourself and say hi now, although I don't see any, except for Frank. Frank, you got anything to say? All right, without uh I will entertain a motion.
I'll move that we adjourn. Oh, my gosh.
Okay. What has been moved and seconded that we adjourn here. No objection. We are adjourned. Have a beautiful day, everybody.